Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 4, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Selectmen Titlebaum, Bruce Manise, and Chairman Trappiano are in attendance. Missing is Selectman Slavin. Also present is Town Council and Town Administrator.
All right, let's see. Pledge of Allegiance. Ah, the moderator's fresh back. Let's have her do it today. Fresh. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the law, liberty, and justice for all.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right, announcements, please. Let's start with, oh, no, Alan. That's going to be a miracle. Jim, anything?
I'll pass.
Peter?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the people who came to the Redevelopment Authority workshops that we held on Thursday evening and again Saturday morning. We would have hoped for a larger turnout, of course, but, you know, some of the questions were pretty good. It was a very nice presentation. Richard Swenson, the citizen member of the Redevelopment Authority, did most of the presenting, and he did a really nice job. I would urge people to go on the town website and take a look at the economic development strategy that was presented. We hope to get additional feedback from people if they haven't had an opportunity to read it yet, so please let us know what you think, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Mary?
The Wareham Cultural Council continues to conduct a survey to help set its funding for the next few years. Residents have until June 30 to take part in the survey, which is required by the Massachusetts Cultural Council in order to gather public opinion about how to best distribute public funding. Citizens of Wareham are being asked to complete a short survey either at the main or spinney library branches or online at the town's website at www.wareham.ma.us/warehamsculturalcouncil. Awarded over $9,000 in grants in 2019 to local organizations and nonprofit groups from Wareham to onset, as well as to several schoolteachers for cultural programs.
Okay, all right. So I was privileged to go to Upper Cape's graduation ceremony on Sunday. I was lucky to be there for two reasons. One, my daughter Kate graduated, and two, to represent the board. And it was quite a time. The governor was there, I want everybody to know, and he gave a terrific speech. It was really not very long, which was really great. But he started out and he says, "I want everybody, all the children to understand that they have to make good choices." Make good choices. That was his big thing. And it's funny, because my wife says that all the time to the kids. Make good choices, all the time. And he says, then he said, "I had another one," and the next one was, "Spread your wings, you know. You know, go out there and find out what it's all about." Keeping in mind, number one, make good choices. And he was actually pretty funny and jovial, and I'll tell you, I hadn't seen him in that kind of environment, and he was absolutely terrific, and I was glad that he came, and I think the children had to came. And in fact, before it even started, he went into the gym and talked to all the kids individually in the gym, which was really nice of the guy. You know, so it's nice that he chooses, you know, they've been a lot around here between him and Karen, they've been around here a lot for us.
Yeah.
You know, so that was very nice. I'm also privileged to be able to go this weekend to our high school graduation, which should be pretty exciting. And so I'm going to look forward to that, and I'm sure it will be just as rousing as that was. All right. Next up, citizens' comments. Is there anybody here? Ah, all right, come on down.
This is a good one.
Okay. Well, could you just tell us who you are when you come up?
Sure.
Not that we don't know.
I'm Claire Smith, and I don't know what happened to May, but the days flew by, and all of a sudden I realized we're into June, and I realized that I needed to get some press out and get some feedback from your board as well. Back in 2014, when we had the celebration, I had reached out to a gentleman in Wareham, England, and thought maybe we could get someone to come over to represent Wareham, England, and that didn't happen. But last fall, John and his wife came over, and they got in touch with me. Howie and I met with them. We went out for breakfast and lunch and dinner, because we got to talking and enjoying their company all day. They are coming back, June 17 through July 4. So I've made arrangements for John to do a presentation at the Wareham Historical Society to talk about Wareham, England. And I think people will really enjoy his humor. He's going to talk about the history of Wareham, England, and the connection between Wareham, England and Wareham, Mass. So it's June 24 at 7:00 at the Methodist Meeting House. So I'd like to see a good crowd of Wareham people come out and learn about our sister city of Wareham. But not only that, what John would like to do is he would like to have a little tour around town, because when he goes back to Wareham, England, he is booked to do a presentation on Wareham, Massachusetts.
Oh, that'd be nice.
So if anyone has any thoughts or ideas as to, you know, what we can show him around town, I know Howie and I have come up with a list, but sometimes people think of different things that we might not think of that would be far more interesting. So we want to make his stay enjoyable, fun. They did tour a little bit of Wareham when they were here last fall. They're a really great couple, and so I'd like to have a really nice welcome for them, you know, to our town, so that they can go back to Wareham, England, and tell everybody over there that we're great people and we have a great town.
Okay.
So it's the 24th at 7:00 at Wareham Historical, and if you have any ideas of, you know, something we could do for them to make their stay pleasant and enjoyable here in Wareham, I'd appreciate any thoughts or ideas that you might have.
Fifty-four miles of beach won't do it.
Well, we do have one section of town that we're going to take them to that I don't know how many people have been out there, but it actually looks like the cliffs of Dover in England.
Yeah.
So it will make them feel at home. But we do, you know, we do want to take them around. If you've got any thoughts of something that you think would be interesting, or you, anybody that might have even pictures or photos that he can take back with him to, you know, help him with his presentation that will spotlight our town, anything that anyone has, if you get ahold of me, you know, I'm happy to connect with you. But he's a lot of fun. Like I said, we met them early for breakfast at 7:30. We talked until 11:30. It was too late to order breakfast, so then we ordered lunch and forgot to order lunch, and it was 4:00 before we knew it, and we took them out to some cranberry bogs and entertained them for the rest of the evening. So they're fun. They're a lot of fun, and I think, you know, if people come that night, they'll really enjoy his presentation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, next up is board comments. Jim?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I always try to figure out the difference.
Got to bring you a microphone, right to you.
I always try to figure out the difference between, you know, the comments and announcements. They're all getting intermingled. So on the comments, I attended a seminar by the Cranberry Chamber of Commerce on background checks, now they all done the same. So that was pretty good. That was for like about an hour, hour and a half, I guess. It was over at the Massasoit Community College Annex in Middleborough there. So that was good, informative. It was someone that does it for a living, but kind of give you a little bit of insight to what they do and the different uses companies would, will make of him to do the background checks. You know, a lot of times it's simple things like apartments or, you know, rentals, job checks. But I did, I did ask them about, you know, I think it'd be a good idea to do background checks for reappointments of constables, and he think, thought it would be shortsighted if you didn't. So just did that for informational purposes. And I got a couple other things, I guess that'll come under the liaison reports.
Okay. Peter?
Nope.
All right, so we're going to go by that. Appointments, reappointments, and interviews.
Appointments.
April A. Lawler, is she here? No.
Nope. So we have April A. Lawler that is looking to be reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees. We just have a letter here.
Do you have a board on that?
Yes. It's, I don't have a count, but it says, "Thanks for the notification. April A. Lawler is a valued member of our board, and we would, and we will take a vote to rerecommend her at our May meeting."
Okay.
Just a reminder. That's all I have, yep.
I don't have the minutes on file yet.
Yeah, they're not on file. They did ask to have her reappointed.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to reappoint April A. Lawler to the Wareham, sorry, the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. That word?
Yeah, that word.
Yays, nays, abstaining. It's 4-0-0 in the affirmative, okay. We'll get it after a while. Okay, next, licenses and permit. Application by Paul Rose for a one-day liquor license to be held on Saturday, June 22, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I believe this is in the, in the, what do you call it, the pavilion?
Yes. Yep, it's a graduation party.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for Paul Rose for Saturday, June 22, 2019, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0. Second-hand dealer's license, Church of the Good Shepherd.
Yep, this is their...
We assume that's a college or a university.
Which? Oh, yeah, with the liquor license. Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be a...
The attending adults.
They've been doing this a long time, you can bet on that.
There'd be adults there. All right. I make a motion that we approve the second-hand dealer's license for the Church of the Good Shepherd, and is this just good for a year?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Okay, now, the update from the Community Events Committee, apparently there was some issue with them and they canceled. They're going to come back, we're rescheduling them for another day.
We have a member of Community Events here right now, don't...
That's not Community Events.
Oh, that's, okay, I'm sorry.
Community Preservation.
No, she's open space.
Open space.
I'm open space, but I hear about the...
Preservation article.
Yes.
Or proposed article.
Okay, so, yeah, so... So we're going to bypass that. Accept gifts and donations from Clear Channel. Oh, Derek must be loving this one.
Yeah, this should be the annual $10,000 gift to the...
It's the annual $10,000 gift that we have from the Clear Channel billboard, and it goes to the TA gift account. We spend on various things without the community, so...
What's it go to?
The TA gift account.
I don't have that amount in here.
You know, it's $10,000.
He has a gift account. We don't have a gift account, but he has a gift account.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so...
I am cheaper than you guys.
So just move that we accept the donation from Clear Channel.
Okay, I move that we accept the donation from Clear Channel.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Accept a donation from Geoffrey H. Worrell to the Animal Control.
Yes. It says, "On behalf of the Town of Wareham, we are pleased to accept a $50 donation to the Town of Wareham Animal Control for the medical care for found animals, the amount of $50."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next is the donation by Donna Truran.
Turin.
Turan?
Turin.
Turan. To Wareham Free Library.
Okay, I move that we accept the $100 donation from Donna Truran on behalf of the Wareham Free Library.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Okay, next is vote to apply for CPC articles.
Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir. This is, it is a CPC application, but because it is a town facility as a playground, the town needs to apply. So I'm going to hand the application out to you. You're not getting off, Scott Fray.
No, I know I would.
You beat me up enough, you can come up here.
I have the second... Can I see which one you have?
This is the one Sandy sent me, on 5/24. This is the wrong one. Sandy would have sent me the wrong one, so we can...
I want to make sure.
She's watching somewhere.
I was going to say.
I have...
You're speaking in silence here.
No, I'm in silence.
No, here. Sometimes you should be...
Okay, yes, this is a copy.
Okay, which one did?
I have, I have a copy, just in case.
That was the, that was the initial one?
Yeah.
It's, I just changed a few things in there.
Miller's Choice?
Sort of.
Has the overall scope of the project?
No, the overall scope hasn't changed. We just added that...
So we can kind of...
Number seven, that is our success. It's adding person, Shangri-La Playground, we use the play equipment, basketball court, the building, the site, we no longer...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds better.
And the success of this project will be carried by the number of children who now have a safe nearby location to play and by the vast number of families who will be able to access the playground both by foot and by car.
So Carol?
Stairway down from Restful.
So Carol, let's, if you don't mind, just give them an overall scope of it, who's been involved.
You're going to have to sit down, no one get in a microphone, please. Excuse me.
All my personnel.
Did you get in a microphone and talk to us, please? And bring the microphone nice and close to you, because nobody at home can hear you. I've already, I got one text already.
And the part that was missed was that the site will not be flooded.
That will be addressed.
Not be flooded, yeah. Instead of it will be flooded?
Yeah.
And it will be flooded.
Well, it is flooded now, but it won't be flooded any longer. So far, I have met with...
Carol, why don't you just give everybody your name, background?
Oh, okay. My name is Carol Malonson. I am one of the members and one of the moderators for the Shangri-La White Island Shores Neighborhood Watch, and I am the administrator for the Shangri-La Playground Improvement Committee. I think that's the name of it.
And you're on the town's open space committee?
I am an open space committee member, and I have been working on having the Shangri-La Playground redone. We've already had the majority of the equipment removed from the playground because it was extremely deteriorated and dangerous. The only thing remaining in the playground now is the basketball court and one picnic table and the merry-go-round, because the merry-go-round they can still use. It still spins, they play on it.
That's an antique, man. Because when I was a kid, they had those, those are the most fun playgrounds in the world.
They, that's, that was the first thing the kids said they wanted.
Oh, yeah.
And we sent out a survey, online and in paper copy, and we had 96 respondents to the online survey. We could only take a maximum of 100, and I had 15 to put in from paper copies. So we just had to go through and do the math and figure out what everybody wanted. And based on what the residents want and what the kids want, we've put together a plan to build the playground. So I talked to Doug Knott from Premier Park and Play. He came down, looked at the site, looked at what we wanted to do, gave us an initial proposal to do it, and I got to thinking, I had gotten a catalog from Municipal Maintenance when I first started this whole thing with playground equipment in it. So I started looking at the playground equipment in that catalog compared to what the playground company was proposing. We could do a whole lot more if we purchased the equipment separately and paid a builder to build it. So then I drew a graph, and I figured out, I looked, all of, the book gives you the dimensions of the area that it needs, how big we'd have to build it, and what we could put in there. And we can do much better by buying it from the outside and having it built. So I got a quote from Doug Knott for just doing the assembly because he is a certified builder. The only question I have now is in his email, his most recent email regarding building, using that equipment, he said the estimate to build it would be $35,000 to $40,000 for building. That does not include the playground mulch, it does not include the new product that they have for the pads that we talked about, because you have to have, now you have to have, according to state, you have to have a surface for a wheelchair to reach each piece of play equipment. But it does not have to be the poured and placed rubber. There's a two-year test run for another product that is matting. They're big mats that they place on top of the mulch. So for two years, you're grandfathered in, if you use this, you, you're covered under the law. So the estimate to build what we were looking at is $35,000 to $40,000. Not counting, the mulch itself was, I think, $15,000 delivered. Everything adds up after a while. We will be moving the basketball court. I have estimates from three pavers to do the basketball court over again. All four, tearing up the old one, removing everything, disposing of it, and building the new basketball court, all included in that price. And the prices they came back with were absolutely phenomenal. They gave us great quotes. JC Engineering and Outback Engineering both gave us very reasonable quotes to do the survey for the playground, as well as to address the drainage issue, because that has to be done prior, before we can build. We have got to address the stormwater runoff that's running into that playground. And they think it'll be a fairly easy fix as far as it's coming in, in two separate points, and it's because it bowls down in the middle that the water runs off and it just runs right into the center of the playground. So we need to possibly put in, what Sandy referred to as water gardens or...
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens or something, like ditching with gravel to divert the water so it stays off to the sides and then seeps into the ground, or French drains. But it shouldn't be a major project to address the drainage issue. ABS Fence has come in with a quote, which will have to be adjusted because now, because of the new guidelines for the state, we have to put a perimeter around, the entire perimeter of the playground inside the fencing. I believe it's five feet wide. So we've had to expand the size of the fenced-in area. So that quote will change a little bit, but we have an estimate from them. We have an estimate from three pavers. As I said, they came in really, really reasonable. And the estimated cost, using the 2019 price list from Summit Supply, which is a catalog I got from Municipal Maintenance, the equipment we're looking to buy includes a large structure for 5 to 12, a small structure for 2 to 5, a 10-foot tripod swing set with four seats, a T-swing with three seats for the toddlers with an ADA seat, the merry-go-round, a four-seat seesaw, a climber, a net climber, structure for the kids, the basketball posts, a bike rack, three aluminum benches, and three picnic tables. And we came in at a total cost of that at $70,000 not delivered, if we buy in 2019. With everything going up the way it is, it'll be probably 15% higher if we wait till 2020, the new catalog prices. If you would like to see what the equipment looks like I'm looking at, I have pictures of the equipment we want to put in that playground. That's up to you, if you'd like to take a look at those. I brought those with me.
Yeah, I mean, do you have it?
Yes, I do.
I'll make copies of them now, Derek, borrow some paper.
Yeah, if you can, then we'll put them in, should put it on the record, yeah?
And this is a layout that shows how the structure will fit in January.
There you go.
This diagram gives you... Really, how loud do I have to yell? This diagram shows how everything will fit based on the footprint, which each piece of equipment gives you the footprint that you need to install that playground.
Yeah, that's fine.
That piece of equipment. So that's based on that, and it shows that everything will fit in a 100-by-100-foot area.
Okay, that's fine.
That's just a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take a copy of these for the records, yep.
You can see why Carol and Sandy have gotten along so well, the organization of this.
Okay. All right, so the total cost of the project is $220,000.
Yes.
And that has a contingency in it, I'm assuming.
What, that, any monies would be returned to CPC, is that what you mean?
No. A contingency means if there's some overruns or whatever, you can cover the price.
Right.
So you, you know, usually 10% or something like that is...
Yes, yes.
Put aside just in case, you know?
Yes.
And Carol, there's some, I'm sorry, there's some community support or donation anticipated or...
There's a lot of community support as far as a lot of the work. Like, to begin with, we have to dig down 12 inches, if, let's say we stuck with 100 by 100, for example, we have to dig down one foot in a 100 by 100 square foot area for the mulch. We want the 12-inch base. That will be done by community members. Some by hand, some with backhoes. We may need to cut into the hillside on the Restful Lane side in order to, because now it's a little bit larger, we have to keep it far enough away from the basketball court that the kids aren't slamming into the fence when they go to get a ball that's bounced out of bounds. So there may be those big, like railroad tie timbers, the big eight-by-eights, or stone wall, something to support that runoff, because that sand just keeps washing down into the playground. So we're going to need to cut it back a little bit and put in some walling of some type over there. Putting in the, as far as the playground itself goes, that is the only thing the builder will be doing. We will hire somebody to erect a pavilion. We will hire somebody to install the stairs. It'll be a licensed contractor naturally. All the other stuff, like putting in the picnic tables, putting in the benches, that will be done by community members. Here I have, as of today, I have 12 letters from, one from the Chief of Police and the rest from neighbors in support of the playground, with more coming through. Those will go in with the application. Naturally, everybody wants it done, and it's a lot easier to just, you know, sit back and go, well, you know, when's it going to get done and when's it going to get done, and expect somebody else to do it.
Okay.
But it will get done, one way or the other. There are enough of us, it'll do it.
Let's see if I can help you out now, okay?
Okay.
All right. So can I have a motion, please?
I move that we...
Allow.
You have a question?
Allow, yeah.
Go ahead, we'll discuss it after.
We'll get it once we get to the discussion period.
I move that we allow Derek to, how am I putting this?
Seek CPA.
Apply to CPC.
Yes. Allow Derek to seek CPA money in the amount of $220,000 to restore the Shangri-La Playground.
Okay, motion made by Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Discussion.
Yeah, I just...
Talk close to that mic, please.
Yeah, I'm good. Can you hear me, Bob? Okay, he's good. Good. Now, you propose this through open space, who submits it to Mr. Sullivan. Um, now, you're, you propose this through Open Space, who submits it to Mr. Sullivan, correct? And now, there should be a breakdown of the cost, I would think, attached with the sheet of what you're requesting, of what the costs are.
I'm sorry, I'm, Jim, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Can you hear me?
No.
Well, so, there should be a breakdown of the cost that she was discussing attached to the sheet.
Right.
You know, itemizing each cost, correct?
There, when we do the full, sort of, the full packet, this is the preliminary to see if we're okay.
Based upon estimates that have been received.
Right.
Now, when you do a scope of work like this, do you put bids out for the construction and, and the removal and?
Correct. This isn't going to be, this isn't, it's a project, but it's not one whole project. For example, basketball courts are separate from playground structures. So the basketball courts are gonna be one, one bid, because the one, the people that install playground equipment don't do the asphalt and the basketball courts and things like that. Everything's, for example, we put it out for bid, everything's prevailing wage, and that runs through the town. So technically, even though this is a community bill, the town is the applicant, has to do all the bidding, has to do everything. Um, the community members that would be volunteering their time would have to, to sign off and, you know, give us, uh, what do you call it, I'm sorry?
Waivers.
Yeah, releases and, and things such as that. So, uh, it is, it's a community effort in that the community's bringing it forward, but it is a town project, because it's a, it's a town.
Town property.
Yeah.
Now, and has municipal maintenance looked at the issue to try to correct the runoff down into the playground and the water issue?
We've been down there. They're the ones that took down all the playground equipment. Mr. Menard, myself, have walked through the area. In order to, um, work with the drainage, we will need someone like a GAF or something to present something, it's a, a proper drainage plan. We think, you know, I could have the guys go in there and dig a hole and drop some riprap, but we'd like to-
And you contracted the people to do this, right? On behalf of the town?
It might be our-
This is a plan, and you do the contracting for all of the, correct?
And it might be some of our guys having to, that-
Right.
Because we've done some of the drainage work in other locations.
I think it's a great, like, great plan, I just wanted to kind of clarify from my own mind, um, the process, and, and you'll, you'll, I'm sure, give us a clearer idea of the itemization of the costs and the steps.
Well, that'll all come out when they get to CPA, because they have to make the presentation in what money they want, what they plan on spending it on, and everything else required by law. All we have to do is, all we're doing is authorizing Derek to go and, and, and make an application. Then all of the paperwork that does follow-up, like the pricing and all that stuff, will be put together and brought to CPA.
Then it'll bring it back again, ask for permission.
No, it doesn't come back to us until it goes on town meeting floor, and then we'll, we'll see it again.
Well, we'll come back to go on the line.
Yeah, we'll vote to put it on, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we could get two, two shots at it.
We'll, we'll, we'll see it again.
Right, to the app.
Once it's all done-
Yeah.
And approved by CPA, then it'll come back to us again.
I think, Mr. Chairman, uh, Selectman Minister's point is really good in that I don't think people understand how much goes into a playground.
Oh, no, they don't. No, they absolutely don't.
And we have another great project coming forward for Hammond. Uh, they, they sent a, they sent a, a proposal substantially higher. I've asked them to wait, they're not exactly happy about it, because people have put a lot of work into it, but I think, uh, there's a lot more clarification that needs to be done for exactly what you're, you're, you're speaking about.
Well, yeah, and that's kind of why I was inquiring. Um, I understand what you want to do, it's a great, but there's a lot of steps to be completed.
Right.
So, I get, it might be ready for fall, I don't know.
Sure.
If you get all the information back and-
I mean, right now, we have three estimates from engineering.
But, but it has to come through the town, correct?
Right. They've done the initial preliminary work.
Right.
If this gets approved-
That's what I'm saying.
Jim, if this gets approved, too, we'll, we'll use sort of all the estimates going on, especially, we'll double-check its prevailing wage, and, and then, once it goes out, I'm gonna have to send it out for bid again. There might be some of the playground equipment I'd have to double-check if there, it just changed its name to, uh, Power Source or something, but it was the National Joint Purchasing Association. We're allowed to pull equipment off of that, it's like a state bid list, essentially.
Mm-hmm.
And you also have the state bid list, you can go on to COMBIE, so there's certain things that can be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
Yeah, I had actually, I had actually first been informed of this project and met with Carol and Sandy and Derek a month ago, just to sort of go over it and talk about it. I think it's a great project. Uh, there's a ton of kids up in Shangri-La.
Yeah, they're isolated.
They're a long ways away from any other playground. Uh, right now, uh, you know, the place is just, you know, it's basically just a hole in the ground where people hang out. Uh, if we put something in there that the community could be proud of, I think the community will end up policing it and keeping it in good order, and keeping the, 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 uh, the element that sort of hangs around there occasionally out.
Well, that was, excuse me, that was another thing that was addressed before we even started to really push for this, was Open Space said that if we wanted to redo the playground and go through this process, they would take care of the safety stuff, because they had money from CPC for safety. That includes three security cameras that will be donated by Higgins Security, he's a resident of the neighborhood, lighting in the playground. We also have a gate that is now closed and locked, and stays closed and locked, because summer's not quite here yet, so I'm not opening it yet. There's nothing down there. Um, so, as far as safety goes, those cameras will feed to the fire department on Glen Charlie Road, and from the fire station to the police station. So the police will be able to see whenever anything goes on in that playground, or there's vandalism, or anything happens, they can access those cameras. And that's already been agreed to be paid for by Open Space, with money they have from CPC for safety.
Mr. Chairman, I had one caveat before I had agreed to bring this forward, and that Carol would have to stay on longer once this project's completed. She, she had to stay on Open Space, so, and she said she had no plans on going anywhere.
No, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, great. The other point I'd like to make is, uh, this cost is, you know, if, if we look at it over time, it's in keeping with the amounts that we've invested in, in some of the other playgrounds, including Oakdale, and also the Hathaway Street Playground, uh, the, the Lukey Playground. So it's, uh, it's in keeping with that, uh, you know, it, it's not a small number, uh, but this is pretty much the going rate to create any kind of a usable playground in a neighborhood of this size, so it is what it is.
That's what the fund's for.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, all right, so now we have Twenty-Four Hour Business. So, we do have, uh, something that-
Carol, can you just give me a few minutes to make copies of those?
Absolutely. Did you get the, um-
We do have something that came up on Twenty-Four Hour Business.
Changed.
And that was a common vic for-
Application that I gave to Derek.
Um-
You might want to make copies of that, too, because it has been edited.
Okay, I will, sorry.
They, they're opening?
Yeah, they, they had some issues with, uh, contracting and things of that nature, and it took quite a while-
Yeah.
-to get where they are. But, in the same instance, they're sort of up against the wall to get open, because they've been spending a lot of money, and they need to get some money in there. Now, the one thing we don't have is their paperwork tonight.
Right, there's no paperwork.
For some reason or other, it's not here. But I would like to get a vote, subject to their paperwork coming in, to give them a common vic, to authorize them to open as soon as possible.
Now, these are the people who owned it at the time that it caught fire?
The time that it caught fire.
So they previously held a common vic?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm just getting that out on the record, so that, you know, people don't think we're just handing, you know, somebody we don't know from a hole in the wall.
It's the same individuals.
Uh, the common vic on, on a wing and a prayer.
We gave them one before, it'll have the same kind of information, so.
Yep. Get a motion?
I make a motion that we-
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and I'm sorry to interrupt, why don't you give the authority to, for one member to sort of do it as a, either yourself, as a clearinghouse, if that's-
Yeah, just authorize me to, um-
Review.
Review and initiate a common vic for, uh, Cranberry Cottage.
So that way, we have somebody that's actually doing the vetting that we're saying that-
Okay.
Okay.
That's actually a very good idea. I would've done it anyway, but still.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Second, yeah, and then, once the information comes in, just send it to us, so we can, um, you know, get back to you.
Take a look at it and sign it.
Yeah, if we, no, if we have any issues or concerns, we can, we can say something to you.
Okay.
I have no trouble with you just doing it, but, you know, it's nice to look at the, uh, information and the application.
Well, I can't hold it up, I've gotta push it forward, so even if it's-
Do they want to open Monday?
After the fact. They, they, they plan on opening by the time the weekend rolls around, yeah. So that's their, their goal.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm trying to get them open as quick as possible. Like I said, they, they had spent a lot of money, as everybody knows, they did a nice job over there, they just paved it and everything, and they're ready to go.
So, I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry to step in here, I'm assuming the chairman trophy, I know you're right, I, I knew you'd vet it, but if everything's not there, there's some major issues, so.
Well, yeah. We'll take care- All right, so, y- y- you can authorize me to do it, and I'll make sure that it gets done properly.
So moved.
Second.
Those are made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you. We'll deal with that. Next up, is any other Forty-Eight Hour Business?
Nope.
Town administrator's report, please.
Mr. Chairman, I am happy to announce that we've provided a conditional offer for the Director of Inspeccional Services, AKA the Building Commissioner. Uh, the name of the gentleman is Mr. David Morris. He currently serves as the, uh, as the Assistant Building Commissioner Enforcement at the Town of Sandwich. Uh, he is sitting for the first of three exams for the Building Commissioner license, so I want to put out there, it's, there's, there's a couple different provisionals. One is always passing, um, certain, certain background checks, physicals, et cetera, but also that within, we've put it in there, that he's required to get the Building Commissioner certification within one year, barring any, sometimes a test isn't offered all the time, but barring the timeliness of the test, we'd certainly, if it's, everything's working out, we'd certainly extend it.
Right.
Um, he's got, he actually, his, his construction goes back to nineteen eighty-seven, being a member of the carpenters' union, starting off there, and, uh, he's owned his own business, and about two thousand thirteen, he moved on to the municipal world. And, uh, actually, watching his progression's been, i- it's nice, and he seems to be somebody whose demeanor will fit this community, so we think it's gonna be a good match.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I just- Go ahead, first.
Yeah, uh, the, the state building code, uh, to the extent that it governs, uh, the eligibility of people to serve in, in building inspector and building commissioner positions, does allow you to hire somebody on a provisional basis, uh, so long as they obtain the certification that goes with the position within eighteen months. So, within a year is actually less time than what the state would allow, and it's a good enticement to him to, to get cracking and complete a certification as a state building commissioner.
Okay. The other thing that you gotta know is that he's eligible to sit, everybody has to understand that. Uh, we had a building commissioner once upon a time, and he was ineligible to sit, and they set him up to take a test that he couldn't ever take, because he was ineligible to take. This gentleman is qualified and is eligible to sit for the exam.
Correct.
So that's the important thing for everybody to understand. So it's not unusual in any town for this to go like this, this is pretty common, is, um, somebody could be a building inspector and you bring him forward, he's still gotta sit for the commissioner's exam, uh, no matter what. So this is not an unusual occurrence, I just want everybody to understand that.
What was his, um, municipal, uh, assignments, what were they? What was he, um, Assistant Building Inspector, or?
Correct. He's currently been the Assistant Building Inspector. Before that, he worked for the, uh, Town of Canton, and that was, uh, that was building maintenance for, for the department, so.
That's been, what, um, six years?
So, six years over there, from twenty thirteen through Canton, and it's been a jump for, into the inspeccional services. So what we had, uh, we had the interview, and then we had him go out and do inspections with, uh, the, um, interim, Mr. Aquina, who was our previous full-time, time, because it is a bit of a leap that we've seen, and obviously, there's a little concern, uh, but in a way, it's nice to have somebody come in that's learning the town and learning the habits of this town. We sometimes say, it's nice to get somebody in that hasn't learned the bad habits already.
No, that's true.
So, um-
It's absolutely true.
Just one more point, he is a state-certified local inspector, which is the first sort of level for somebody to, uh, perform inspections on behalf of a municipality, so he's already got that, he's already taken the examinations for that.
Yeah, ironically, his, uh, his bachelor's degree is in human resources, so, I don't know if he'll be backing up Doreen anytime soon, but it's nice, you wanna know what's good? Having a department head that, you know, knows human resources and such, so.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so I need a motion to, um, to, um, to make the, to, uh, no, what we do is, we, all we do, actually, we don't need to do anything, we can just say that we're okay with it, and that's it, because there's no requirement, but if we could give you a vote, if you want.
I, I'm fine with either, or we can bring it for, put it on the agenda for next, next meeting, or whatever's for the, you can just do a phone to it, Bob?
All right, I can do that, let's put it on the agenda next time.
Yeah, I'm fi, I'm fine either way.
We have fif, we have fifteen days under the charter from the actual time somebody is appointed, so.
Okay, let's do that.
How many applicants and interviewees did you have there?
We s, we had a total of five interviews, there was applicants that had, uh, that had other experience, um, there was, we don't think there'd be a culture, um, you know, connection, if you will, so.
Good.
Yeah, that, that's something that we take into consideration as well.
We're special.
Well, it's important.
It is.
Okay.
Anything else? Uh, yes, sir. The, um, I'm happy to announce that the, if you remember back in twenty twelve, um, the Department of Education did a comprehensive analysis of our school department, the educational system here. Uh, you know, it actually turned out to be a pretty damning report, and it's, so, a couple months ago, I choose, I think it's almost gotta be six, seven months ago, uh, the DOE came back to do a, another comprehensive district review, and last Thursday, the superintendent gave the, uh, gave the school committee an update, and I'm really pleased to announce that there's been so much change towards the positive, that, uh, I, I would really ask that maybe we get the superintendent in here to speak about it-
Okay.
And bring it forward. But the, the report was extremely positive, the leaps and bounds, there's, there's still, there's some issues, obviously, from, from all of us, but the change and the work that's been done, and it reflects so well on our school department, and, and, uh, I, I just think it's really positive, love to have him come forward. And one of the big things they highlight has been the turnaround with the communication and the working together between the town and the school, so.
Well, I'll reach out to them and see if I can schedule them in here, and they can, you know, give them a little way to toot their horn a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, 'cause I, I, it was really great, especially, uh, I was interviewed for about an hour over it, and they said, I was wondering, what do they want to speak to me about, but it was, they were just asking questions about interactions, and I guess I, I didn't realize that some communities, the town and the school department don't interact whatsoever, don't try and work together on projects, so, I just thought-
Hopefully, we're not, we haven't been like that in a long time, so.
Uh, the next item is from Chief Walsec, and I'd like to read out a, uh, memo to the board, if that's okay. And it involves a recent incident on Route Six, so, on Tuesday, June third, two, two thousand nineteen, at, uh, three, three o'clock in the afternoon, Wareham Police and EMS responded to Marion Road, Route Six, for a pedestrian accident in the area of the crosswalk near Swift Beach Road. This is the third pedestrian accident at this location since December two thousand eighteen, just since last December. After review of those accidents, all involved people were lawfully crossing in the sidewalk, with at least one vehicle stopped for them. It's a four-lane highway, so sometimes somebody will stop, let that person cross, and the next person comes. The major concern is that there's a four-lane state highway, and that one vehicle stops another attempt to pass them in adjacent lane, not realizing that the car was stopped for the pedestrian. Thankfully, all of the accidents resulted in non-life-threatening injuries. This is including the recent 16-year-old girl. However, I believe that with speed of vehicles in the area and layout of the road, that a very serious potential fatal accident is possible at that crosswalk. Today, I've spoken with Daniel Viera, Assistant Maintenance Engineer at Mass DOT, and he is conducting research into the location as far as studies in the, of the area and possible safety improvements. And I'm going, this isn't in the chief's memo. Frankly, I was ready to have the crosswalk abolished, and I know that sounds draconian, but us allowing people to cross there, that's, it seems, you know, it seems like we're inviting disaster.
We've asked them for a traffic light there.
Right.
Mutual times.
We did a traffic study with Surpad. They said it doesn't warrant a light at that intersection or anything, but at one time, and I was speaking to the moderator about it, Swift's used to have, you know, things down where you could go. You had the arcade, pizza shop, and things like that.
There was a flashing light there once.
Yeah, and this young lady was coming down from, you know, one of the AVs down there, going across, and I don't know if she was going to Donkey's or what, but, you know, that's, or to the country market.
There's no crossing light there, correct?
Right, there's not, so.
Yeah, so, that's an issue right there.
Do we need to write another letter?
I'd appreciate another letter. The chief has gotten Representative Gifford involved as well, and I think we need to, we need to go full court press on this. Even if it's just, I don't know, would love to have one of those crossing lights that stops people, but even the blinking light for something that has, you have to get the, the.
Control all lanes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, and I've been going down that end, that's when I lived back in Rhode Island before, that's the route I used to go home every night. And there's a couple kids dressed every now and again in the dark hoodies or something like that, and it's, you know, they're on the side of the road crossing. You don't see them until the last second, so getting some lighting, getting something just so you can, again, control all lanes.
Yeah, you know, if people are trying to leave Swift Beach Road, you know, you tend to edge out, so you're basically, you're blocking the sidewalks. If someone coming down 6, I guess it would be coming from the west, heading east.
Yeah.
They wouldn't see someone in the sidewalk.
Right.
Whereas if you have a light, if you hit the button and it either, you know, just flashes the white light, or flashes yellow, then red, or whatever you just want to do, whatever they have for that, people coming down the road would see it and know.
Well, I.
It's a bad spot.
I think we should write a letter, and to State Highway, and let them know.
Yeah, I think. We really need some help on it, and we'll look internally, of course.
Document the incidents, and, you know, I mean, this is only since 2018, that's a lot.
We look at Cranberry Highway, we don't allow lawful crossing there, and it's, you know, obviously, it's more congested, but Route 6 is fast.
Well, there is, there is at.
15 miles an hour.
At Stop and Shop, there's lawful crossing.
Is there one over there? I didn't think there was.
I believe so. I believe there's a.
Is there a light?
There's a button, there's lights there.
With a traffic light on there, yeah.
Correct.
Right, I'm sorry, the, a non-control, yeah, there's nothing like that.
Right, that's where the light is. At Stop and Shop, when they did the intersection.
And there's a lot of people, they can't, you know, you think about the summer, everybody's going across to the country market.
I haven't seen any crosswalks.
You've got the woods down there, so.
Coming out of the woods of Wareham.
There's just so much going on there.
And a lot of people walk up.
Can I make a suggestion?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. No. So let's.
After, if you.
Afterwards, you're welcome to talk to us, but you can't during the meeting, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Let's, so let's write a letter. Why don't you authorize the chair to put a letter together, and we will. Somebody want to do that?
Oh, I make a motion that we have.
Go move by Peter, seconded by Mary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll get a letter together. And we'll get it off the State Highway. Anything else there?
Yeah, and I do, I want to thank the whole community and everybody involved for the Oyster Festival coming off so well. That was really awesome.
Good. That's something I forgot to talk about.
Yeah, it was, I brought my family down, we had a great time. I won't lie.
Yeah, last week.
I snuck a beer in Pizzoli Square. It was all legal, you're allowed to, but it went really well with the lobster rolls.
Lot of work, and they did a good job.
He sold out, you know, of lobster rolls.
Yeah.
You know, in like three hours, he was gone. And I'll tell you what, there was a lot of people down there, and that place was packed, and we should be, you know, thank that group that helped put that thing together.
Yep.
Bob and Linda and Nora and all that gang that helped put that together, because they did a whale of a job. And you talk about an increase, that thing's only, what, three years old now?
Six, it doesn't seem like.
Wow, it doesn't even seem like six years, huh?
So we came a little after 10, and I've been used to, we come in there not too much, and it was packed already. It was such a beautiful day. Then we were behind, we were helping Sharon bring the stuff back to her car from selling the rubber duckies there, and we saw a family that was across on the other side of the tracks with the little empty kid. They said, boy, you should really have picnic tables on the side. I said, can't really do that, but, you know, they were from Boston, there were so many people from out of town that heard about this. And then the activities going on at Tyhona, what they had made peace had going on at the same time, it really meshed well. And I got to tell you, it spells that we could really do something with Merchant's Way, if we can, if we can get something going.
Oh, I totally agree.
But they did an awesome job, I really want to thank them, you know. My pockets were lighted a little bit, the kids are going to every single thing, there's really fun stuff around, so.
Okay, yeah, so that was awesome, and I'm sorry, I forgot it myself, that was great.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Are you doing liaison reports tonight?
Yep, we'll do that right now.
Okay.
And you're up.
Here we go. Some of the stuff we're doing is not even on the.
Alan's not here, so you've got big shoes to fill.
You've got big shoes, so you better have a lot.
My feet aren't that big. So as part of the liaison stuff, I went to the regional refuse meeting, interesting. I'm going to send an email and request, like, the actual members from each town and, you know, contact information and whatnot, which doesn't seem to be, it's not a sheet that you have. But it was good getting to know people, there's another new selectmen from Carver on there. So I think there's selectmen from each town now, and some discussion of things coming, and I know this past weekend, they had the hazardous waste pickup, but only in Wareham and not in Carver also, which they always did. So it was a kind of a traffic jam, and they handled what they could, and they did the best they could. So, you know, in future planning, I don't know if the town will offer things, or if it'll still be the regional refuse. As it is now, I believe that basically Covanta picks up the tab.
Covanta picks up the tab. The last time they did it, it was about 65,000, I think.
Yeah.
So this will be, this one's going to be a little bit more. I think we've got at least one more through them, but there were so many people turned away. I don't know if you know anyone, Jim, that was turned away.
I was in line.
Yeah.
I got there at noon and 12:25 to shut it down. There must have been 100 cars still waiting.
Yeah.
And my, one of my neighbors had gone three times trying to look for a better spot, a better time, and Peter had told me, I guess he was texting someone, they said it was a traffic jam, or he got the, he says it was a madhouse, and he was quite correct.
So, I got to, I got to, let me just make one thing clear, though. Part of that was not the fault of the fact that they were collecting hazardous waste. There was actually an accident, and two of the cars that were in line were hit by a car traveling at erratic speed, which caused a big do. Then there was another accident or something down by the YMCA. So there was other things that played into that, not that they wouldn't have been busy, but it wouldn't maybe have been as bad.
But they normally have two sites.
Right.
So now they're down to one site, and they're handling the same volume. And I've always used this whenever they had it. We didn't have one last year because it just didn't. And it was a transitional year, as to say. And so having one site in the same amount of time, you're going to expect the volume to, you know, triple. And it's mostly Carver and Wareham, a small number from Marion.
Yeah.
And just a very few, I think, from Rochester.
Yep.
So, you know, as we go forward, and I'm sure it'll be discussed, and hopefully, Covanta will again pony up. But it's something you need, one way or another. I mean, a lot of places have, you know, waste oil, again, you can bring that to Walmart if that's where you buy it, but people do it at home.
You can put it back in the containers, you can bring it to.
Yeah, and, you know, latex paint, you can open the cover, dry it, and throw it out.
Yeah.
Which they don't accept anyhow. So, and then, people spoke about commercial vehicles. I don't know. We'll get a better handle on it once we have a meeting, we get the direct report.
There were some vehicles with big drums in them, I guess.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's commercial necessarily.
I don't know if that's the purpose of, of, you know, hazardous waste day for, you know.
Those people should be calling an environmental company and having their, that amount of waste taken away.
And it's, it's too bad, because sort of a shame, because it's supposed to be a nice thing for our residents, and I'm really sorry.
It's good for the environment.
It became so frustration, frustrated. And they're doing the right thing, they're holding on to it, and it's, we had a gentleman in Monday morning who was really, you know, he was still pretty upset, he was very cordial, but I couldn't, couldn't imagine how he was that day if, you know, you could still see how upset he was. And, you know, clearly not something we want to happen, we want it to be really good, so I think we'll work with the district to try and, try and smooth it out for the next one. And it has to be two sites or two separate days, at least.
Just as an observation, I think the city of Quincy does it twice a year, and they invariably almost wind up shutting down State Route 3A. And if you're not in line by 10 o'clock, forget it, it starts at 9. They get overwhelmed by these things everywhere, so it's not that uncommon for what happened here to happen.
Well, previous years, again, you know, if you got there early, or you got there at like 11:30, you might, you might be waiting in the driveway, you know, and I use it every year, so, you know, from my own experience. I think it was just overwhelmed by the number, you know, all towns are going to one place, and it's not something they were used to. I mean, the accident didn't help, but, anyhow.
Well, those cars in line probably kept that person out of the woods.
But what'd they say, they were all floating about 90 to 100 vehicles an hour?
Yeah, it was like 387 they did, and they were shut off a half hour early.
Yeah.
Something like that, if I remember my figures correctly. So that's, they were processing, it's just the volume.
Yeah.
You know, and again, as you know, we've got another year and a half on our contracts, we're going to have to make some decisions. Probably good to have information session workshops for the town people to have their input and what they'd like to do. Of course, we're going to have to refine what the approximate cost would be to operate a transfer station, where, when, so that'll be upcoming. Also went to recycling meeting, just for a quick collo, and spoke with Mr. Sullivan about that, and, you know, what we're doing, and, you know, some duplications, and they pay to process white goods, where on the other hand, the regional refuse, you know, they're getting paid per ton, they pay 125 bucks per pull, but getting paid for tonnage. But, you know, so some things we need to look at with the operation of that also, my opinion.
Yeah, I think, you know, I bet they were ecstatic to see you, though, they had somebody there.
Maybe. I think they're glad they have layers on, but as far as being there, I don't know. They were nice, they were very good.
Yeah, they're great people.
Well, at some, at some point, we're going to have to accelerate the program, because we're running out of time. And we keep talking about running out of time, and I just want to make this point that a year goes by pretty darn fast.
It's going to move especially fast, and I'm glad we have Jim on board, because I think it's going to have to be not just the public meetings, but I think we're going to have to put some polls out there and try and hit as many people as possible, because there's, there's no way we can, without the support of this community, that this change is gonna, is gonna work. I don't see it, you know.
Okay, what else you got?
That's all I have.
Oh, you're easy. Mary?
I'll meet there.
You have nothing?